All right, it's six o'clock. Call this meeting to order. Rokal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is this an agenda topic? Not an agenda topic, but after the meeting, at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. So we've got one public comment, that's gonna be at the end of the meeting because it's not an agenda item. Notice of executive session, meeting?
Your Honor, no executive sessions have been held.
Approval of minutes?
Motion.
There actually are not minutes in your packet. As I was recovering from purple tunnel surgery, so typing said minutes was not going to happen.
Right.
They will be on your next agenda.
Communications?
We have no communications.
Managers report?
Thank you, Your Honor. So there's only two items. The first is that we have hired a planning and zoning administrator, Pierre Grelle. He will be in August 1st. He comes from the Crawford County Planning Office. And then also Katie Wicker will be promoted to Assistant City Manager in Gary's place when he leaves.
Fantastic. Council Subcommittee Reports. Housing and Economic Development. I don't think we have anything extra to report. We're still doing some behind-the-scenes legwork. Community Engagement?
I don't think anything to report from us. The Environmental Advisory Council is on the agenda for tonight.
Finance?
I'll keep it brief, Your Honor. The updated provisions of the projections for the budget shortfall are approaching $1 million in 2023. I have prepared some comments, not on the agenda tonight, not for discussion tonight. With some comments and thoughts for our members of council to consider, stimulate their own thoughts on the subject. And we probably need to devote more than a couple of study sessions to this process because it's really going to be complex.
Is that, that's?
That, yeah, I think Mary Ann at some point will just-
After the meeting, I'll pass out.
Right off. Old Business, Authorities, Boards and Commissions?
Your Honor, last time we extended the deadline until the end of June, we did receive two additional applications. At this point in time, we have four individuals interested in the vacancy on planning and zoning, three individuals interested in the two vacancies on the market authority, and one individual interested in one vacancy on the water authority. If council wishes to move forward with interviewing those individuals, we can get those set up in the upcoming weeks. Is there anyone? Is there anyone in particular that is interested in interviewing for any of these boards, authorities, commissions?
Would you be doing the interviewing?
Yeah, I think Gretchen and I said we'd do it this time.
Okay.
Everybody opted out.
And you'll do all three?
All of them?
I mean, unless somebody else wants to do it.
You can do all of them if you want. I mean, I'm not gonna bet you for it.
Yeah.
That's a lot.
Well, we're the newest, we'd be happy to do our part to do that first, and then we'll opt out later. Wouldn't we hate it too?
Hate it.
Okay.
So a lot of interviews you're gonna do?
A lot of interviews.
Well, I, you know, Gretchen and I'll do it now. And if it gets like to the point where we are unable to do it in time, then we'll ask for help.
I think that would be the best way to do it.
And then ordinance first and second reading. Before I do that, you're adding the other two people onto this list?
They should be on there already.
So everybody in their entirety that we have got is on the list?
Should be on the list in your packet tonight, yes.
Sorry, I had to think of that. Ordinance first and second reading, establishing an environmental advisory council?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, establishing an environmental advisory council to be known as the City of Meadville Environmental Advisory Committee.
Okay. Can I have a motion for the first reading?
Some of-
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
This was the ordinance that was presented at the June 15th meeting to council with the edits by council members included in that. And I do believe that Schaefer Law Firm had made a notation about calling this an environmental advisory committee rather than a council.
Right.
That's correct.
Was it committee/council so that we kept council in, or the legalese for state?
Right, so it's identified as a council, but for our purposes, they'll be a committee just so that we could get state funding if needed.
Right off. Rokal for the first reading?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Can I have a motion for the second reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion? Rokal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Discussion motions, City of Meadville Communications to Council Policy. Motion, or did you want to read it first?
I don't know if you would like me to read the policy in its entirety, but we took the comments from council at their last meeting and included, it's highlighted in the packet, and included how communication can be received. And we've created a dedicated email that not only goes to myself and Mary Ann, but all of council. And then also, we removed the former Section D and added that all communications will be included in the minutes of the news of it.
Can I have a motion to adopt?
Motion?
Second.
All second.
Discussion?
I still want it to be clear that we want to hear from people.
Right.
And that this isn't the only way to do that, but it's the way to do that that would then be like logged in the minutes for official record.
And we can notate-
Want people to know that.
We can notate on the Facebook page and website that this is one means of communicating with council. There are also office hours, and then each council member can be contacted by email and so on.
Right off. Okay, Rokal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
New Business, Ordinance First and Second Reading Amendment 911 Addressing Ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, amending ordinance number 3797 of 2022 of the Meadville Municipal Code to specifically amend Section 1 of the ordinance to authorize and designate Crawford County to assign property at address numbering for city buildings and uses in accordance with standards required by the Crawford County Enhanced 911 Automatic Location Information System for the health and safety of city residents.
Can I have a motion for the first reading?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
So if council recalls, in March, this ordinance first came before you. It was a request on behalf of the county. The city was doing their own 911 addressing, one of the only municipalities in the county to do so. For safety reasons and for some voter registration reasons, the county thought it best that they handle all of the 911 addressing for the county. Council said, fine, that's good, we can do that. Turned over 911 addressing, but only in the ordinance for new addresses. So that does not allow the county to rectify any issues with existing addresses. County in doing their work has come across some issues with addressing, not a ton, probably a handful or so of addresses that would need readdressed. This amendment to the ordinance would give the city notification of any upcoming address, existing address change, and allow the city permission to veto whether or not that address change goes through.
The affected parties would be notified?
They would, yes.
This is generally, oh, go ahead. This is generally in the case where it's like, you know, 260 A, B, C, rather than like half, like where it's addressed by letters and halves.
It could be that, but it's more typically if there's something potentially out of order. So if you have like, or like an odd number on what's supposed to be on an even side, something like that where it's really more of a public safety issue as opposed to the letterings. Because when you go in to change the letterings, oftentimes it can make me more havoc than it's worth. But if it's a number truly out of sequence, something like that, that's really what they're talking about.
So they can be found easily by like emergency responders?
Exactly.
By the way, that's what I was gonna ask.
What exactly the examples would be of that? And we still hold the discretion of changing it or not, and then those parties could come and speak to us. You know what I mean? If they got notified.
Know what their address is.
Yeah. Anybody else have any questions? Rokal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Motion for the second reading?
Motion?
Second.
Discussion? Rokal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Discussion Resolution, authorize signatures cooperative agreement, City of Meadville and Allegheny College.
A resolution of the council of the city of Meadville authorizing signatures on a cooperative agreement between the city of Meadville and Allegheny College for the purpose of delineating investigation responsibilities.
Can I have a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Discussion?
This was brought up at the last council meeting. There were a couple of questions that came up in regards to whether or not the city transports Alleghenies people to, or not. They do not. Allegheny is responsible for doing that unless all of their cars are in use. We also have an MOU dating back to 2016 on use of the holding cells. They are permitted, Allegheny is permitted to use the city's holding cells, but we have an agreement that dates back. Chief Totten and Jim Basinger from Allegheny College are here. If you have any additional questions that they could answer.
I have one question. If they're using our cells, what about the incarceration fee? Who is responsible for that?
I do not believe that that is included in the memorandum of understanding. We can take a look at that to address that.
It is included in that. Excellent.
When you say transport, you mean to transport to like Segertown? If somebody has to go to Segertown? So Allegheny could say this person has to go to Segertown or to Meadville, and they transport them? Or do, for somebody to have to go to Segertown, they'd have to come through you?
No, they can do their own transporting. We only assist them if it's someone beyond their control, which is pretty rare. Otherwise, they do their own transports.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Can you talk a bit about like the frequency of how often like?
That we're providing transports?
Not transports, but just like, just kind of general help. I know that's in a lot of-
We have.
There's a wide range.
We're down to very limited contact for the most part since when I first started. A lot of the students were off campus housing. We tell the students regularly. Now that most students are on campus, our interactions have gone way down.
Right, I started in Allegheny in January of 2020, and I think we asked the city to transport people two times since January of 2020. Again, that's if somebody is combative or, and we don't feel like we can control what they're doing. So my officers are trained just like the city officers. They have Act 120 training or Pennsylvania State Police Basic Training. So they have all the training. They have to keep up with that training as well annually. So they know the laws and when they can arrest folks and when they can't. We've been doing some of our own charges as well, which that takes the that off the shoulders of the city when they're busy. We can actually file charges if we have to for folks to filing things within our jurisdiction, which is just along the campus.
So the MOU provides us kind of a framework of, since we have two law enforcement agencies kind of working alongside each other, who's really responsible for what levels of crime? We're not staffed to handle all of their low-level, if more nuisance crimes, I would say. Any higher level stuff that either we take or we can assist.
When there is a higher level crime, is that when you bring them here to our holding cells? Or is that just when you call?
They would call. So the incident occurs, they start the investigation, realizes it's this level crime, then they call us immediately and we come up and take over.
Is there like a line between student and let's say citizen or person like with the incident that happened a couple of years ago? I think at Ravine, like where a woman was attacked. So how does that work? Like, could you just kind of walk through that? Like, we, like, yeah.
When that was reported to our department of Public Safety, our officers would go over and basically secure the scene. They'd stand there, make sure nobody's in and out after they make sure no, there's nobody injured in the room, of course, and get those medical attention or whatever. But then we would just secure the scene and call for the city officers to come up and take over the investigation. And then we would work cooperatively with them. If they needed to talk to certain people on the campus, we could go out and bring them up to them. If students want to report certain crimes to the city officers, we offer to transport them down or we provide them a place to meet at the college in private with the city.
What, so what's the difference? If it's a non-student, right? So is that kind of what you were getting at? Like a non-student, if, would you just call our chief? Or would you handle that also? Right, like you have a friend of a student maybe staying there and does something little or? You know what I mean? Like, not little, but you know what I mean? Low level, like that's-
We can charge, it doesn't matter if it's a student or not. We can charge any person on Allegheny College campus for the crimes that are delineated in that memorandum of understanding.
That was just mine. I just wasn't sure how that worked out, but that's fantastic. Does anybody have any other questions? Yeah, thank you for coming and answering our questions. Rokal?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.
Discussion, Ray Street Lumber Stormwater Fees.
So Josh Sharitz is here from the Historical Society. Earlier this year, Ron Maddox from the Historical Society came to update council on their plans for the Ray Street Lumber site. At this meeting, he mentioned that the Historical Society would have interest in acquiring the properties that are slightly inhibited due to the backdoor stormwater fees, which are approximately $17,000. There is a letter from Josh in your packet formally requesting that the $17,000 in stormwater fees, which the Historical Society did not incur, and it was the previous owner incurred those, be forgiven by the city. And Josh can answer any additional questions you may have.
Your Honor, if I may, I would just say that we need to look at what our history is for stormwater forgiveness so that we stay consistent. So, and we can take the fact that they're a nonprofit into consideration when we're evaluating that request.
All right. Josh, could you speak to how the $17,000 would be prohibitive?
Yes.
For you?
So the Historical Society was offered the property last year by the current owners, Ray Street Lumber Incorporated, which in 1994, '95, basically turned out the lights and shut the business down and did it set and g for the better part of three decades. They've offered it to us for a dollar for future rehabilitation and obviously not operate as a lumber bar, but the property dates back to the 1860s. Five, four to five buildings on it date to the 1880s and 90s. It was the original home of Meadville Whiskey, which was a national company that was located here in Meadville. So there are opportunities for museum space, there are opportunities for tourism space. It works well with the French Creek Heritage Entertainment District project that's happening down there. Unfortunately, that, when I say offered for a dollar, they let us know they offered for a dollar in back taxes and stormwater, which the two of them combined put us over $30,000. And it's a project that would be over a period of time. We are, we've already raised the funds to cover the back taxes. So those will, they've alerted us that if we don't want it, they're going to let it go to a tax sale. So we've already acquired the funding through private donations to really, to take care of the back taxes. However, that extra $17,000 takes a $15,000, $16,000 bill and makes it a $30-some thousand bill. So from a private donation standpoint, it makes it the board a little antsy on. We haven't quite hit that number. And also, if from a standpoint of, again, with donated funds, every dollar we have to put into those, it's also a layup. We can't do anything productive with the property. Try to, A, get it back into upstanding. We're not asking for any forgiveness on anything in the future, but to try to make it upstanding, use it for the community. It's a great gateway property to connect different areas of Meadville together. It's a great property to do everything from programming to tourism uses. But that initial first step. We just finished some environmental investigation in the Phase 2, which the results came back last week. So our board actually just made the decision, which is part of why we're still in that fundraising phase and haven't been fundraising for ages and ages, because I don't want to, we didn't want to ask anyone for money not knowing what environmental liabilities were there. But because we got that back and a survey back, and we felt comfortable saying, okay, let's proceed, we're to that point now where we either have to pull the trigger or say, you know what? We're going to pass and it goes to tax sales. So we're hoping to try to work the city as a partner to relieve some of that to allow, A, us to have the upfront funds to acquire it, and B, to put more money in the future into actually rehabilitating the property so it could be something for the people of Meadville and Crawford County.
Josh, what's the timeline? Like, when would you need, when would you need an answer from the city?
That's part of the heading. The, technically, it has gone to, it's already been with tax pay bureau because it's, because it's been so far overdue. So there is a tax sale set up for, or will be a tax sale set up for summer. So that's part of the problem. For us to make an acquisition on it, we're going to have to, we're looking at a closing in the next week or two to try to get it, get some of those funds paid down or payment plan set up or whatnot so we don't have to let it go to tax sale, as is the goal.
You, you said you raised the money for the back taxes?
Yes.
Right, so that's on.
That part is, yes.
So with, with this, I guess what my question is, 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 let's say we weren't able to give up the whole $17,000. Is that gonna prohibit you from closing?
We will take whatever help we can get with it.
Okay.
And the reason I say that is I've got, I have, this part of our process in saying, okay, where do we feel comfortable? We've been talking as a board consistently here. We've made the decision to proceed with the plan for it. I've reached out to donors who've said they would contribute. And then I've been continually keeping in contact with some of those people who said, okay, depending on what it's at, a little bit, I can help a little bit more. So it's mostly trying to get a clear plan of what those final costs might look like and how much of that could be a potential payment plan versus how much of that could be a forgiveness so that I can go to a couple of the donors and say, hey, we need this much. And then know whether we need a small amount or a large amount or where in between that is.
But it sounds like there's some discord between like the timeline that you all have, which is to close in a week or two, and the timeline that we have, which is that we need to hear back from, like, we need to look back at precedent and what's precedent.
Well, not only that, it's on the agenda as discussion. So we don't have it to vote on it tonight, but the earliest we could do that would be, would be at the next meeting. So that's why I was asking, to make sure that, that we understood, you know, what your timeline is and had the time for our solicitor to look at that, make sure that we're being fair.
Sure.
Just another question on a more positive note. Could you speak a little bit to what your plans are like? Some of the things that you guys have been thinking of? I know you, they're not in stone, right?
No, nothing is in stone at this point. We've had, it is a six-acre site. So we've talked about the idea of partnering with French Creek Conservancy, which is a neighbor already to that site. Spring run runs through there. There could be some opportunities for outdoor recreation. There could be opportunities for various community uses. There are two buildings along Spring Street that would make excellent large pavilions for anything from community use to rentals for events to what have you. So there's just those pieces intact already that could be some low-hanging fruit that honestly, with some rush hogging and some minor repairs, could put it in play within a year. And then the longer term, we would start looking at basically building by building and saying, okay, what of these are modern structures? I see modern, 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s, et cetera, that need to look at being removed because of their condition? What of these can be rehabilitated for some kind of modern use? And what needs does the community have that, between the French Creek project and between this board and between the north of Meadville, and between counties whole, et cetera, that we can help fill in those needs? So we're looking at very easily being able to have, you know, the community get together or whatnot within the next year, provided volunteer assistance and a lot of training and progress, to be honest with you.
Josh, do you have-
Trying to find buildings behind those, we-
Do you have some kind of an idea as to the percentage of the property that might remain on the tax rolls after everything is completed?
At this point, the board has, and we've done this, as you've seen with Palmettole and prior to that with the Tar Mansion, we've taken as little off the rolls as we possibly can. For example, the Tar Mansion is a situation where only our exact office space is off the rolls. The remainder of it, we're happy to be taxpaying citizens. And that's what I think, in any use that we have down here, be it a tourism use that would generate, anything that would generate an income or whatnot on the site. Let's say there's a banquet facility or, and that's just as an example. Any of that would need to be on the tax rolls. And it's our goal very much to make that property a taxpaying contributor to the community.
Do you have like, kind of like a cash flow or an idea? Like, have you done like a financial, kind of like, well, this is, you know, how many events we need to do? Or I was just curious in terms of that, like into the, probably like the immediate future where you're trying to-
In this current moment in time, we're still in the environmental, finished the environmental and looking at the acquisition phase. But the beauty behind the property is, again, if we can get over the hurdle that is the accumulation of past fees and debts and taxes, we have the ability to continue to cover the future taxes and fees that from a timeline standpoint, it doesn't have to be a massive stress on the organization. We can do those low-hanging fruit, start having some community buy-in in the project, and then look at it and say, it's been vacant for 30 years. Let's do this slow and procedural rather than jump in and cause massive financial or stressful burden on the organization. So would I, would we be, within five years, would we have eight buildings over there renovated? By no means. Would we, would we have a space of it to where if an organization says, you know, we'd like to show it after a movie and we're afraid of raining, there's a 150-foot by 50-foot pavilion over there that's ready to roll that could be used by a local organization? Or, example, even like the Deery Field coming or whatnot would make a great rain location. I'm seeing smiling, so I'm assuming that's what was thought. So that said, that's the kind of, the kind of immediate success that we would be looking for.
Could you just tell us a little bit more about the survey results, the environmental survey, like kind of just?
Yes. Yes. So, so we were relieved. Moody's did a phase two survey with the help of Act thirteen and some state funding that was, we partnered with the Economic Progress Alliance on. And what came back was the, the thing that everyone kind of expects unfortunately in that corridor. So railroad was nearby and it was an industrial site for the better part of, for over a century of its, of its life. So that said, there are, um, it's not acceptable for, without, without some cleanup for residential uses and daycare, a senior center, et cetera. It is potentially usable for non-residential uses, museum space, areas where if their area, because so much of it is under cement or under concrete, asphalt, et cetera, any of those areas are perfectly acceptable. So there would need to be, let's say, example, you put a playground in, there would need to be some soil removal and replacement. But if you're looking at anything where you're using the buildings and the amount of it that is paid, really creates for quite a few central uses, thankfully.
Tim, can you speak to, like, um, how does, how do old stormwater fees factor in to our financials? Right? Are we counting on, on getting a whole stormwater?
Well, I can refer back to Council Monroe's financial report when he said we're going to be a million dollars out of balance come twenty twenty-three. Secondly, another item that we might want to think about is that the, the city has resisted giving donations to nonprofits. We have so many nonprofits in town and they all do a wonderful job. It's just difficult to pick and choose who you donate to. So this would be like an indirect donation if you wiped the lien off. So I guess I'm looking at maybe our redevelopment people to figure out how that they might be able to swing some type of a redevelopment idea to help them out to, to help the city redo that land over there maybe, so.
So we are.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
But it does sound like in, factored into the budget, like, we are counting on a hundred percent like payment of stormwater fees.
Yeah, because stormwater fees, we're using quite a bit of that for major equipment and redoing a lot of the streets and, and storm drains. Absolutely. Sorry, Josh.
No, okay. Now, this is, this is a conversation amongst partners and friends. Out of curiosity, if it does go to tax sale, how will stormwater be something that is covered back to the city in part of the tax sale proceeds?
Yes.
But the other stuff would get wiped, so the money you've secured to cover the back taxes, right? I mean, wouldn't the other back taxes get cleared? No, not in the county.
I think you're talking about me a tax sale and judicial sale.
All right, so no one buy it.
Just out of curiosity, you mentioned there may be cleanup, removal, dirt, things of that nature. Who would be responsible for that?
If that was, the situation would occur that we would use it for a use that would require that, that would be on the landowner, which at that time would be the society.
And Josh, quickly, there wouldn't be, until it's purchased and in the historical society's name, right? There wouldn't be any ability to look for grants or anything to help pay for something of this nature. So it would be either, as Tim put it, like going to the RDA and trying to figure something out that way or so it would be more of a win-win than a, a loss on either one of us.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, until it's, and that's been the situation right along, it's been basically until you, well, the same is true with us coming to you guys, until a closing is on the horizon, it's, we're talking a hypothetical spot property that's not ours.
Right. Anybody have anything else?
Thank you, Josh, for being here and answering our questions. Resolution, authorized signatures, community development block grant, cooperation agreement amendment, City of Meadville and Crawford County.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on a community development block grant, cooperation agreement amendment between the City of Meadville and Crawford County.
Can I have a motion to authorize signatures?
Motion. Call a second.
Discussion.
So in twenty eighteen, the city signed an agreement with the Crawford County Planning Office to administer CDBG funds. After doing this for a couple of years with the city, county realized that there needed to be some amendments made to the agreement to correct some language that is either programmatically outdated or not thoroughly enough addressed in the original agreement. So that's what you have before you are the amendments to the original agreement. No financial changes or anything in this agreement.
Can you speak to any impact this would have on, like, the public facing side of administration of CDBG, Johnny?
It really wouldn't. So it addresses some of the fair housing complaints. So the county will be, again, responsible as the city's designated fair housing officer. So if there are any complaints about a city, you know, housing unit, that can be designated to Zach Norwood, who's the, the fair housing officer. But this has a lot to do with just reporting compliance subcontractors and who pays them, whether it's paid directly from the county or from the city, more along those lines.
Reading this, I got, sorry, I have questions. I got the impression, so it looks like, correct me if I'm wrong here, under kind of citizen participation, right, only like ideas for CDBG projects are presented to the city at the first hearing and then fifteen days following. And then does that window close or does it, does it go to county?
It, so it closes, it closes. It's, that's the way that has been since the start of the program. The city will solicit at the first public hearing, ideas for projects. You have a certain amount of time to submit those to the city. After that comment period is over, then it goes to the county and the county will hold the second CDBG public hearing. And that's where the projects have been selected by city council and formally presented to the public.
Mary Ann, when this is, um, county will that's made fair housing officer and so anyone, because just a second ago you said public housing, anyone that has an issue, okay. When you said public housing, you mean?
Anyone in the public.
In, in the public, okay. When I hear public housing, I think, I don't think of anyone in the public, okay. So if anyone that is having an issue with their housing could go to the county and complain to Zach Norwood in what, writing?
You can do it in writing, I believe that's the request.
And, and what are the, um, when, when you say complaints here, what, what are some of those? Just anything, any issue that they're having, they would go to Zach in, in the county?
So there are criteria that outline under the fair housing law. So if you feel like you've been discriminated against in your choice of housing, you can go ahead and, and go to Zach and report that and they can investigate that. Do you have any other criteria off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, no, but essentially if someone's not being treated equally, they can file a report with the county.
Just like in any, any way, shape or form, they could say that, I don't know, my rent is being hiked up a lot. I think that is unfair, my, my. You, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, that's what I'm asking, like, is it just?
It, it primarily focuses around the factor of discrimination, being discriminated against. So the, my rent was increased because of my race or my gender, something under protective classes.
Just, just wondering. Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Resolution authorizing signatures amendment to letter of understanding City of Meadville Community Development Block Grant, entitlement program. I'm just gonna.
It's wrong, that's a wrong.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on an amendment to the Community Development Block Grant Letter of Understanding for Federal Fiscal Year 2020 and Community Development Block Grant CV between the City of Meadville and Crawford County Coalition on Housing Needs.
Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Call a second.
Discussion.
So in twenty twenty, the city agreed to use fifty-two thousand eight hundred forty-six dollars of its annual CDBG funding and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-one cents of its CDBG coronavirus funding to help fund the Crawford County Coalition on Housing Needs replacement of their emergency shelter roof. Originally, these funds needed to be expended by the end of December of this year, but due to supply chain issues, HUD and now DCED had allowed that to be extended until May of next year. And this is just a update to the memorandum of understanding that continues the agreement through May of next year.
Does anybody have any questions?
I think we have housing coalition folks here. Have, have we seen delays in that, uh, in that work on, on the shelter roof? Because guys, aren't you like on the board, sorry?
Yeah, we have to request the extension because the, the vendor that got the bid said that they just didn't have the materials to be able to do the work this year. We would have intended to do it this year, but we, we couldn't.
So it's happening here too.
We have a vendor, we just don't have the materials right now. So this will allow them to get everything, uh, because it's going to be a total renovation of the roof. It's such as going to be a, put a, uh, little layer of material down. It's going to be totally excavating the roof and putting in a new membrane and everything.
Any questions? All right, roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Um, resolution modifying, is this fiscal year twenty nineteen and fiscal year twenty-two? CB, there are CDBG planning funds, Meadville Market House or old preservation plan.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing a modification of the fiscal year twenty nineteen and fiscal year twenty twenty Community Development Block Grant allocation. Resolved by the council of the City of Meadville that whereas Act one seventy-nine of nineteen eighty-four established the Community Development Block Grant CDBG entitlement program to financially assist municipalities with a number of community development needs to benefit low and moderate income citizens. And whereas the City of Meadville and Resolution Number Seventy-One of twenty nineteen dated November sixth, twenty nineteen, authorized a submission of an application for a total allocation of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and four dollars to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for funding through the CDBG program. And whereas the City of Meadville and Resolution Number Seventy-Three of twenty twenty dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty, authorized a submission of an application for a total allocation of three hundred and eight thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for funding through the CDBG program. And whereas the City of Meadville originally allocated five thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents from fiscal year twenty nineteen to general planning. And whereas the City of Meadville originally allocated six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents from fiscal year twenty twenty to Heidi Cooper Master Plan. And whereas the City of Meadville is formally modifying the fund allocations between projects to reallocate five thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and eight cents from the fiscal year twenty nineteen planning funds activity and six thousand one hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-two cents from the Heidi Cooper Master Plan planning funds to a historic preservation plan for the Meadville Market House. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that council does officially approve the modification of the fiscal year twenty nineteen and fiscal year twenty twenty planning funds to a historic preservation plan for the Meadville Market House.
Can I have a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion.
So the, contractually with the county, uh, the city is to allocate two percent of their annual CDBG allocation to planning. So in fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, there was money allocated to planning. The fiscal year nineteen funding was just a general planning item. Twenty twenty was dedicated to the Heidi Cooper Master Plan. We had an anonymous donor actually, uh, come in and fund the master plan for Heidi Cooper Park. So that money was no longer needed. As with all CDBG funding, the money has to be expended by a certain period of time. We're approaching that period of time. Um, and the market house is looking to do it, bring in a historic preservation architect to look at the exterior of the building, prioritize what needs to be done, suggest what work needs to be done and create a plan for that. The plan will probably cost around ten thousand dollars to have the historic architect come in. Market authority doesn't necessarily have or want to expend that money. We have the planning money at the city, um, and that's suggested by staff to go ahead and reallocate that for the historic preservation architect. Because it needs to be used and.
Discussion. Anybody have any questions?
Where, did staff look at any other, was it just kind of Market Houses needs? I was just wondering if there was any, there any other areas that you were considering?
Um, I mean, it's a little bit hard to do the planning and expend the funds in the short amount of time that they need to be expended in. The Market House came about that this needs to be done, their roof will need to be replaced within the next three years. And this will allow, having a historic architect come in will allow them to, um, apply for more historic preservation type grants and open them up to a larger grant funding pool. So this made a lot of sense to staff to dedicate the planning funds to that initiative.
And it's confirmed, um, that this is a CDBG eligible?
It is. We've been in touch with the county and also the state, our grant administrator there, who's been a part of this. In fact, when they were up here doing some monitoring, the state, uh, we took them past the Market House and went over it in person with them.
Will this, um, will this get rid of that money? Like, it, will it use it in its integrity or?
It should.
Yes.
We're going to, uh, so Jason Rogirio is putting together requests for proposals for the historic architects, there are a number of them across the country, Boston, Pittsburgh, um, Erie, I think, as well. Solicit those proposals and look and see what those numbers come back like. But this will be ultimately council's decision on which architect and to move forward with the architect. We would like to keep the market authority involved in, in the loop on those decisions.
You said in this short period of time, when does, when, like, what is that short period of time?
They're typically three years for contracts, so three to four years. So the twenty fiscal year twenty nineteen funding would need to be expended by twenty twenty-three. Uh, and then the twenty twenty would be by twenty twenty-four.
And it's feasible that we get the person here, we figure out which one we want and we get them started to expend that money so that.
Correct.
And if we don't use it, we just lose it? Is that what happens or?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye.
Resolution, authorized signatures amendment number two and reimbursable agreement for Rainbow Lake Dam Rehab Project, Natural Resources Conservation Services, United States Department of Agriculture and City of Meadville.
A resolution of the council of the City of Meadville authorizing signatures on amendment number two to the reimbursable agreement for Rainbow Dam between the City of Meadville and Natural Resources Conservation Service, United States Department of Agriculture.
Can I have a motion to authorize signatures?
I also move.
Second. Discussion.
So as council might recall, we're now in the design phase for Rainbow Dam rehabilitation. This amendment is simply an extension to the existing agreement that we have with USDA. The way, uh, the dam finding works with the federal government is that the grant, they'll grant the city the money and USDA administers the funds on behalf of the city. I will also note that the governor on June twenty-seventh signed Senate Bill nine fifteen into law, which allocated Meadville three point eight million dollars for the rehabilitation of Rainbow Dam.
That will cover all of our costs.
Right on. Cool.
Yeah.
That is, that's good.
Thank you, Senator Brooks, wish that true.
Wow, fantastic.
Amazing.
It's good stuff.
Yeah, truly, truly. Does anybody have any other questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Rella. Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures Kepler Promotional Unit Listing Agreement, City of Needville and Altair Real Estate Services, Inc.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Needville authorizing signatures on a listing agreement for Kepler Commercial Units between the City of Needville and Altair Real Estate Services Incorporated.
Can I have a motion to?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
Uh, so this agreement is for contracting with Altair to look into selling the Kepler Commercial Units. This does not commit the city to selling, but gives Altair the permission to start soliciting purchasers for the properties.
Questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures amendment number five, accepting form modifying lease with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the DEP Building.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Needville authorizing signatures on amendment number five, modifying the lease agreement between the City of Needville and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for the DEP Building.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
So this is an amendment to the current lease that the city has with the DEP. All this will do is put in force the new leasing prices for the DEP building as well as commit the city to continue with the modifications and repair to the DEP building. So some of the things that are left are the roof replacement on the DEP building as well as the window sills and some bathroom partitions.
Questions?
So this isn't introducing anything unexpected or new into?
That's correct. We, the city has moved along in the repair process of the building far enough that now the state is willing to sign into their new lease.
Um, any more questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution appointing Gene Michael Grill as the City of Needville Building Code Official effective July 9th, 2022.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Needville appointing Gene Michael Grill as the Building Code Official for the City of Needville effective July 9th, 2022, resolved by the Council of the City of Needville that whereas City of Needville Building Code Official Gary Johnson is leaving his service of the city effective July 8th, 2022. And whereas per the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code, the city is required to have a certified Building Code Official to issue building permits. And whereas the City of Needville intends to appoint Gene Michael Grill to serve at the pleasure of council as the Building Code Official. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Needville hereby appoints Gene Michael Grill to fulfill the duties of the City of Needville Building Code Official as set forth in the Pennsylvania Uniform Construction Code and determined by the Council of the City of Needville effective July 9th, 2022. Be it further resolved that Mr. Grill shall hold such office for an indefinite term until such time as his successor has been appointed.
Motion to a point?
Motion. All second.
Discussion.
As the resolution laid out, Gary has been the Building Code Official for the city for the past fifteen years. Again, it's a certified position. There's nobody at the city at this point who has those certifications. So in the interim, until somebody can get those certifications, Mike Grill, who you've met here, he was, um, he you're doing the Building Code Officials Fee Schedule, presented that to council, he will in the interim take over as Building Code Official.
Questions?
You'd expect this to last maybe a period of months until our successors qualify?
It depends on the scheduling of when the certification processes happen and the classes that the individual can take to become the Building Code Officer. Those are solely based, I believe, at twice?
Once or twice a year. It's a week-long class and then a test at the end, so.
So it'll be dependent on when the next class is?
We, uh, there's a class that's happening this summer, so if there's one in the fall, otherwise it'll have to be next year.
Any other questions?
Is there, um, so there's nothing in, there's no language in here about this being interim or, or short-term, um, that?
The resolution laid out that this will be kind of until council appoints a successor to that position.
Council could change BCO at any time.
Yeah, it says that the pleasure of council, which would probably give us a lot of leeway.
The city has to appoint by resolution a Building Code Official, so if at any time council wishes to change, you would just do another resolution.
Isn't that always true?
Yeah, they just have to be certified by the Department of Labor through the state, so.
Any other questions? Vogel.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution authorize signatures Building Code Official Base Fee Schedule, City of Needville and Construction Code Inspector Fee.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Needville authorizing signatures on a Building Code Official Fee Schedule Agreement between the City of Needville and Construction Code Inspectors Incorporated.
Can I have a motion to authorize signatures?
So move.
Second. Discussion.
So because Mike Grill will be the new Building Code Inspector, to cover the costs of anything that he may be doing for the city, the fee schedule has been updated to cover those costs.
Questions?
This is the fee schedule for public facing, right? This is what the public sees and pays for?
Correct.
For the work that they're getting?
It's generally increased about 10% across the board for his fees, not the city fees, of course, but just for inspection fees. It's about a 10% increase because as BCO, he'll be issuing all the permits, he'll be issuing all certificates of occupancy, and he'll be handling any enforcement that needs to be done because only BCOs are allowed to do that.
And he was here just a couple of months ago with the new fee schedule. I think we are the only, we're the, the only municipality that didn't use him as a BCO, so.
He has roughly 70 municipalities and we're the only that he wasn't BCO for.
Is the expectation that this would be temporary until?
Correct.
And then we could readjust the fees?
Yeah, as Mary Ann had stated, we're stuck waiting on the course schedule, so.
But we wouldn't lock ourselves, like lock our city into a higher fee schedule?
You can change, the idea would be once Mike is no longer, then that position, you could reduce the fee schedule because you wouldn't have to pay him for that.
Any other questions? Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution authorizing signatures post-retirement transition assistance agreement, City of Needville and Gary Johnson.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Needville authorizing signatures on a post-retirement transition assistance agreement between the City of Needville and Gary Johnson.
Motion.
Second. Discussion.
So this is a transition agreement that was very similar to Tim's when he first left the city in 2018. It allows for the new planning and zoning administrator as well as other staff to call Gary with questions and actually expect a timely answer from the side. And obviously, staff feels that Gary's going to be instrumental in moving forward with the, Peter is the planning and zoning administrator.
Does anybody have questions?
Does it mean Gary will also be back in a few years?
Maybe.
That's a trend. We'll see. Got it.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. Resolution recognizing Gary Johnson for his service.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Needville recognizing Gary Johnson for his service, resolved by the Council of the City of Needville that whereas Gary Johnson has served as a valued employee of the City of Needville for a total of fifteen and one-third years after being impeached from the Tribune and has served in a variety of positions including zoning administrator, building inspector, permits clerk, assistant city manager, health officer, interim city manager, code enforcement, office curmudgeon, resident Seinfeld nerd, general smart aleck, comma tyrant, and was assistant to the assistant during several difficult times in the last fifteen years, especially the ice jam of 2018. Mister Johnson has performed the duties of his various positions with unparalleled dedication, profound compassion, and veritable glee, ensuring that the residents of Needville are well protected from unsanctioned lemonade stands, unsolicited, unsolicited Girl Scout cookies. Whereas Mister Johnson will be sorely missed by his staff, colleagues, council, and community from his Top Gun sunglasses to his endless supply of Coke Zero, his incomparable knowledge of all things city to his spot-on considerate advice. And whereas Mister Johnson has elected to fully retire from his multitude of titles and active employment with the City of Needville despite finally reaching three weeks of vacation to return to his home turf of Greenville, may they never see a stray sign or an abandoned vehicle under his careful watch to keep him upstairs where he belongs away from, away from normal people. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Needville that Gary Johnson is hereby committed for his many years of loyal and dedicated service to this community and its citizens. Be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Needville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Mister Johnson for every success in the future.
So move.
Second.
Oh my God. Are you crying?
No, I'm, it was for laughing. It's so hurtful.
Roll call.
McKnight.
Aye.
Myers.
Aye.
Reva.
Aye.
Vogel.
Aye.
Kinder.
Aye. I, I gotta say, the office curmudgeon, I think that's my favorite. Very nicely done, very nicely done. We do have one, oh, yeah. One, not agenda, public comment. That is Lisbeth. It's hard to go after that one. Start with Lisbeth. I'd have called you before if I'd have.
So I actually thought it was on the agenda when I, when I did this, but also, so I'm Lisbeth Searle White. I've been in Needville since 1995, when, I remember when Gary was a what, behind-the-years boy reporter for the Tribune. I actually shopped at three straight lumber if I've been here long. But I'm here tonight, I had cleared my schedule for the first meeting about the Climate Action Plan. I cleared my schedule for the same thing, and then I couldn't clear my schedule for the other one. So I'm, I just wanted to say I'm throwing my hat into the ring to be on the environment, environmental, to commit, whatever the committee is.
Council.
Yeah, council. And I guess a couple of things. One is I want to, I want to commend you for saying yes, because I was thinking about this on my way home from work today, that all it takes for opposition to thwart something from happening is just to narrow the topic until, all you have to do is get people to say no. And I see there is just, like, just manifold positives that can come from this that are going to affect so many people. And so I, I was in the energy efficiency, residential energy efficiency work for 15 years. I started a business here in Needville as an insulation contractor, air sealer, home performance contractor, nobody knew anything about what I was doing, which is partly why I segwayed into inspection work. But, but I just want to say that that, that's a small part of the Climate Action Plan, energy efficiency stuff, but it's so important. I mean, and it's, it's the win-win-win-win-win, um, part, part of all of this stuff because it like, it makes buildings safer. Every single person in that field has saved lives. I've saved a bunch of lives trying this way. It makes buildings less expensive to live in, it makes them safer from things like fire. The first responder folks are gone, but when you insulate a building, you actually stop those pathways. When you properly insulate a building, you stop pathways for fire to get up into the attic and stuff like that. And also, you can't outsource, when you're working on your local stuff, it's going to touch so many people, and that you can't outsource that work. It has to be done here by, hopefully, people who live here. And so I just want to thank you for that. And I want to make sure that you've got my intent to apply, because I sent, I sent a letter about the Climate Action Plan. I never got a response from the city. I got, I sent a follow-up because I know that those, all the positive letters kind of didn't get addressed. I didn't get a response. And then I sent this application, and the only thing I got was a, um, I got an out-of-office from some, one of the things that I wrote. That's the only, that's the only thing from the city. So I would, I think if you were encouraging public comment, I think it's nice, even if it's automatic, even if it's just, thanks for being interested, that would have been, that would have been helpful. But anyway, I want to thank you for moving ahead, and I'm ready to serve in whatever capacity I can. Thank you, Lisbeth. And just to touch on that, I, I do that myself. I get emails and then I like give them to Mary Ann and give them to, you know what I mean? And I, I forget sometimes to, to answer back, right? And I myself can do better, and I think that, you know.
I know, you guys, I totally get your feelings.
Yeah, no, no.
There's so much on your plates. It'd be nice if it could go into a channel that even has the mechanism for an automatic thing.
Or like, just an automatic, I get it.
Go to your file, thank you.
Are we even taking applications for this? Because we did vote on it both.
No. It doesn't, the body doesn't even exist yet, so we're not.
I'll say, I miss, I tried to agree with this meeting, so I wasn't sure what the word was.
Right. Yeah, but. Well, right now, it, it, just, just tonight, it, we voted on it, so now we'll, we'll start moving forward.
Well, it was like an, it was an intent, but it's an intent to.
Yeah. Fantastic, thank you.
So just for council's awareness, so this was first and second reading. Third and final be at the following council meeting on the 20th. If that is passed, then 21 days after that, it will be enacted as an ordinance and then a committee discussion on soliciting folks in Needville.
Thank you, Mary.
Your turn.
Class will have the advertisement period that is stipulated by our.
Right.
Our policy of, so.
Thank you.
Uh, for clarifying.
Okay. Council member statements. Jim?
Okay, thank you. Two things, I'd like to note the passing of a former fire battalion chief, Wally Mason. He was a great employee and a good citizen. He's missed in this community. And address my remarks to Gary, you're not allowed to quit. You have to stay here forever, but we are going to miss you, and you did a great job. You're a good guy. I don't care what the resolution says. And you're going to be sorely, sorely missed here at the city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my comments go to Gary as well. I, I think for me being a new person to counsel, you, you just made everything feel like it's gonna be okay. You had answers, you were funny. Obviously, there's a great feeling of rapport. And just even doing the workshop that we did with the Borough Workshop, that was just, that was like a gift. You, you led it incredibly well. I had no idea you could teach as well, so thank you so much for making a huge difference, honestly, in Needville over all these years.
Thank you.
Larry?
Yeah, Gary, I'd like to thank you. Learned a lot from you. I'd like to thank you and wish you best, and I hope things work out for you really well. You might see me down there, like I told you, that's my own motto, so.
Maybe? Thank you.
Also thank Gary. I was afraid of you when I worked across. Scary Gary, but scary Gary. No, but, but yeah, I mean, you, uh, uh, half the things were made up, but I'm sure there's like many, many more hats that, that you really did wear, like done so much for, for the city and for so long. And it's, um, yeah, it doesn't go unnoticed, obviously. Thank you for all you've given. I'm glad that you're staying here as a resident for the time being, hopefully for a while. So, yeah, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
And then, uh, thanks, Mary Ann, for, for clarifying the environmental advisory council process. council process, um, or committee, EAC, the EAC process. Um, that's helpful. I'm encouraged by the fact that it passed the first and second reading tonight. Um, again, the EAC ensures that our Climate Action Plan doesn't just fit on a shelf. Um, folks who've worked with others, right, uh, commend the fact that we're, we're kind of moving, right, uh, both these at the same time. By nature of, of, uh, kind of establishing a city committee to, to do the work, it makes the work laid out in Climate Action Plan participatory, right? And that's important to a lot of us up here, right? Making a government that is participatory, that makes it easy for folks to get involved and have a say, and that's, um, what the, the EAC is designed to do with the work around the Climate Action Plan. Um, and it's not new. Meadville has been part of an EAC before, and so I'm encouraged that it's, it's passed one and two, uh, readings today, and, um, and hope that we'll do it again, uh, later in the month, and that we can get moving on that, um, 'cause we've got a lot of other stuff to do, too. Um, and, and we'll note that, uh, you know, we were able to move some money around today because we had an anonymous donor, so I'll just put that out there, that if there are any other anonymous donors, we'll, uh, imagine all the work we could do. Uh, we'll take all your money. That's all I can say.
Again, I'd like to thank Gary. Um, I will miss the, the smooth beats coming out of the office above, above me, right? Like, wondering exactly what you're listening to, and, uh, I'll also miss the feeling of possibly a heart attack every time you come down this path, and I feel like someone is falling down the steps, right? But, um, I'll miss that. That I'm gonna miss, right? I, you know, it, it's, um, the, the whole feeling of the building will change, and, and, um, I'm really sorry to see you go, right? I am happy, though, that you get to be closer to home, closer to family, right? I won't miss, uh, defending you on doing, just doing your job, you're not out here being mean, right? Like, you're, you're doing your job, and this is what, you know, we, we vote on, and then you do your job, like a police officer or anyone else. So, um, I, you will be missed, and, and I appreciate it. And just to, to segue a little bit, um, you know, as I've been here and got to work with everybody here and got to know everybody, um, it, it makes me want to mention that, um, you know, our, our, the people here in Meadville, our, our lives are really, they're about relationships and how, and how we make each other feel, right? I encourage everybody in town to volunteer for something, to, to get involved, and remember that these relationships, um, have meaning, and it, it makes you realize that the people in town are not numbers, they're not statistics. They're people with faces and families and someone to have a connection with. Um, and, uh, there are plenty of opportunities for people to get out and come together and volunteer and do some really great and big things, right? So, um, do that, and if you can't figure it out, call me, I will get you in touch with a ton of people that are asking the same questions. What can we do? How can we help and how can we make Meadville a little bit better, right? And, um, uh, I just encourage people to do that and, and, and try to, um, stop the disconnect, right? We sit at home, we have had to sit at home, now we get to come out, come out, get to know each other, get to see what we're doing here, because it is big, um, and it is beautiful. So, um, with that, I am gonna ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
To executive session to discuss real...
To executive session.
Litigation, I mean.
Okay. Can I have a second? Okay. Um, discussion.
Roque?
McKnight?
Aye.
Myers?
Aye.
Reva?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Kinder?
Aye.